County Council meetings now in session.
Allison.
Allison?
Oh, yes.
Okay, the Honorable Allison Love will give the invocation pledge of allegiance.
Lord, as we gather tonight, God our hearts with love, God our minds with truth, God our actions with faith, God our souls with hope, we trust in you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I want to remind the council members that under consent agenda, if you want to pull an item out, to do that, actually you can do it now, that would be the best.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to move item number seven from the consent agenda to a future meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. First order of business, oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. When I call your name, if you'd come forward, so Mr. Kendrick can swear you in. Brittany Cannon. Brittany Cannon. Michael's going to be a quick oath of office. Thank you, sir. Next order of business is appearances, and please remember under this, you have up to five minutes max to speak. And the first person to appear is Larry Williams. If you'd come forward, because we want to recognize you for your years of service to York County.
He can come to.
Yeah, he can come to.
So we have the retiree and then the dealing board.
There you go. Taking my steps.
Thanks, Larry. Really appreciate all your hard work.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And if you want to say anything?
I'd like to thank the people I work for, York County. I'd like to thank Stephanie Woods, William Lowman in my office. They've been translational to me. I couldn't have done it without them, and appreciate everything the county does for York County. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next on the list is Paul. Nope, there you are.
Paul Anderco from Rock Hill. I just wanted to come back here again to say hi to all, you know, nothing particular, but the first off, I wanted to talk to you about the Pennies Four. And I want to let you know, I worked on the head committee for six months, which Christie was the chairman, and we gave a lot of thought and process to this, and it's just not coming up with a whim that we should do this. But I do believe in Pennies Four, if it's done correctly. I think it's very, very important that you all take a look at it. I know in the last meeting you had, you talked a whole thirty seconds about Pennies Four. You just voted on it and moved on, according to Britt. I mean, that's not much of a discussion. The people want repavement of the roads. They want the roads fixed. They do not look at putting more and more money into new road construction. And I've gone around, knocked on many doors in this campaign for Congress and asked a question about Pennies. Ninety percent of the people want the roads repaved and fixed. And I know Michael Johnson's area, I went down a lot of his roads, knocking on doors, and he's not getting most of his roads fixed either. And same with Robert Winkler roads, they're pathetic. And go and spend all this extra money on roads that we could spend the money first fixing the roads. We can't trust the state, because they haven't fixed our roads in years. So what I'm asking for you to do is, one, increase the maintenance and we paving up to eighty-two million dollars. That'd be about thirty percent. And you divide that every year, it's not a lot of money, but you go with your C funds, it starts adding up. But unfortunately, at the same time, you're going to have to drop a couple of projects. And that's actually up to you guys discuss and send it back to Pennies Four, which is not the end of the world. I mean, what bothers me the most is, oh, we got to continue this. If we don't continue this, it's the end of the world. And, you know, Michael's wrong about this. You know, we should end it if it's not correct. It's one percent of my money, your money, all these people's money, when they buy a TV set, go to McDonald's, we're spending one percent. It's not even a user fee. So I think it's very important. Secondly, you didn't take a look at what our accountant said. I just want to make this a point. Two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollars, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollars is what they spent. The county's only suggesting they're going to have two-hundred-and-sixty-five million dollars. And the repair and, I mean, the utility cost is off by five million dollars. So you're sitting there with eighteen million dollar shortage. So Neely Road will not get done, and, you know, Twenty-One North, which is in the Michaels District, they'll run out of money halfway through. So you're sitting there, oh, God, we're going to have to push these into Pennies Five. So what I'm really asking you to do your homework, study it. Pennies Two Project, Evanport and Ebenezer, is not even on the list. They were voted by the public in, you know, Pennies Two. And what do you think the voters are going to think in that area? Crap, my road's not being fixed again. And I think it's important for you to take a look at it. You know, Doug Echols has said a few times, I've heard around town, we don't want any maintenance repaired. That's the state's job. We want new, new, new. And a lot of municipalities mayors want new too. And I kind of understand, new's nice. You get votes for being new. But, you know, the other day, driving down Hensley Road, I thought my front end was going to fall off the other day, we're hitting a big divot in the road. And this is July, winter's been over for a while. So what I would like you to do is take a look at it. You know, Rock Hill pushed for Cell River. They pushed like the damnedest to get Cell River in there. In doing that, they cut out Evanport and Ebenezer. You know, that was the city doing that. The citizens want those roads fixed. I know Britt wants Ebenezer fixed. So I think it's, you all have roads in your district that really stink. And if you send it back to Pennies, you know, Patrick's got a list of two-hundred-and-fifty more roads he could add to that Pennies list. And it would only take Patrick, I bet, two days to put all of those on the list, send it back to the Pennies Four Commission, and they would give it back to you within a week, if you can get them back together. So it's not the end of the world. But one thing, I ask you, send it back, have them fix it right. The people want repair and we paving. And if you remember, you know, good old Mr. Reagan and I and Swain put up fifty signs to vote no on the four-year terms, two-year terms. We only lost it by two hundred votes. So, you know, this is no threat. It's not going to be that hard to put up a hundred-and-fifty signs, send out a mailer, you know, with reasoning why, and then you'll be in the worst trouble that it's not going to be fixed ever. But then you'll have to go back to start Pennies One all over again. So what I'm asking you is, let's get this one right to the voters, and it will pass very easily. If you do nothing and hide behind, oh, we just got to continue this, you know, it's going to be a big mistake. And I, for one, fought Pennies Three last time, because I wanted repair and we paving. Manny Kimball on the radio station agreed with me a hundred percent, but it was too late to fight that battle, because it was, when I found out all this information, it was like two weeks before voting. But you got plenty of time to send it back, tell Pennies Four to do it right. I just hope you all have profiles and courage, and have guts enough to send it back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Jerry Rucker with the York County Regional Chamber to present counsel with a resolution in support of Pennies. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair, council members. I'm Jerry Rucker, and I currently serve as Chair of the York County Regional Chamber of Commerce, which is headquartered at 161 East Main Street in Rock Hill. I'm also joined today by Mike Gettings in the back. He is the Rock Hill Area Council Chair for the Chamber. The Chamber directly represents the business communities in Fort Mill, Rock Hill, and Tegucay areas. And our membership includes over eight hundred companies representing over fifty thousand employees throughout York County. The Regional Chamber strongly urges your approval of the package of projects presented in this installment of Pennies for Progress, which would be presented to local voters in a countywide referendum in November of this year. We realize, tonight especially, that not all citizens are a fan of Pennies for Progress, and that the program has faced some criticism in the past. The Chamber also realizes that there are many opinions about which projects were chosen or not selected by the commission. We respect those who feel that way. However, there are many reasons why this council should and must approve the second reading of this package and the fourth Pennies referendum. The primary reason the Chamber has supported every single Pennies vote is that transportation is important to everyone, and this transportation program is a good, is good for business, employees, economic development, and job growth. That and many other reasons are outlined in the resolution, which nicely coincides with the council-approved core beliefs of the Pennies program, including safety, connectivity, prosperity, quality of life, and integrity. There's no county program that better supports the county slogan of providing a better tomorrow than Pennies for Progress. Kudos to the project commission members for their many hours of studying the projects, considering various options, and ultimately developing a strong list of projects. Projects Commission Chairman Jerry Holmes is correct when he says the Pennies program belongs to York County. We invented it in nineteen ninety-seven, perfected it in two thousand and three and two thousand and eleven, and we need to keep it going in two thousand and seventeen. Thank you for your attention too, and consideration of the Chamber's and business community's position in support of Pennies. You should all have a copy of our resolution in your packets.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is public forum. Here again on public forum, remember you have up to two minutes to speak. Two minutes, and I have to stop you after that. First person is Faith, is that Israel? Okay. Just be sure to give your name and address, so Karen can note it.
My name is Faith Israel. Address? I'm representing Clemson Extension Service, 120 North Congress Street. So here with Clemson Extension Service, on behalf of 4H Youth Development, just to give an update of our programs, first want to say thank you for your support of our extension service. With 4H, we have a busy year this year, and last year, our numbers have increased since last year of the number of youth that we have reached in school, out of school, and after school in our summer programs. And also let you know that we have our kickoff of the State Meat Goat Project. If those who don't know, that our six program areas in 4H are plan and planning and youth development, ag and animals, natural resources, civic engagement and leadership, healthy lifestyles, and science, engineering, and math. Also, there's a strong need for volunteers to come into our county programs, to come once or twice a month, to help extend the outreach of our youth in their programs. And York County, we just went to Summer 4H Camp, which is at Camp Long and Aiken. So we were able to acquire some scholarships for our youth in this county to go down, who wouldn't have the opportunity to attend. Transportation wasn't included. We had twelve youth that attended with that camp. And then also, this month, we're going to have the Pinney Leadership Conference, that is in the memory of the late Senator Pinney, Clemente Pinney. That's going to be held at Clemson University, and York County is represented by two youth with that program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Quay Carter.
I signed it. I thought that was just, I got it.
Yeah, I was going to remind you, it's a public hearing, so you can wait for that, and then you're not restricted on time. Next person is David Laboon. And you're not talking about something on a public hearing, are you? Okay. So I was going to give you more time if you were.
Too accustomed to that, huh? David Laboon, 312 Wood Lane, Rock Hill. I come before you this evening to tell each of you our gratitude and our community, that you held strong. It was a year ago that we started the campaign. Many of you got tired of listening to small area business and small area plan and USB line a year ago with the Dave Lyle Boulevard corridor, and with the Newlands trying to do their construction, wanting to do this construction. And our area, Leslie area, fought strong and hard against it, and we prevailed on that. And then we had another rezoning that came up, and again, I found out on the second reading. But you, but I also found out that you rejected it in the first reading. That was off of the Neely Store Road on the Maggie Lane. If you're familiar with that area, that is a gravel road, wanting to put in a number of houses again, right in that, on that gravel road, in a very dangerous intersection between Neely Store Road and Reservation Road. And I appreciate you all's holding strong to what we had discussed last year. Spent a lot of hours last year, a lot of meetings last year against, with the development that was trying to go in on the end of Neely Store Road. And I also want to appreciate, I don't know whether, who all had the responsibility of getting the White Horse Road paved, the same area. The White Horse Road was basically a gravel road too. It has been paved, it looks great, we appreciate it. And just wanted to tell you, we certainly, in our area, we certainly appreciate how you stood up for our, our community. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next person is Olin Pliler. Yes, sir. And it's not a public hearing where you could have more time to speak?
Sir.
You didn't know.
My name is Olin Pliler, and I come up here to find out this rezoning you do, what it really covers. Because the people who ever put it in for it, they probably touched mine. And whenever, it was a RD, I believe, that's what it was, and they wanted RUD or something.
You mean it's.
And I need to know, because I've got a business sitting there.
Which?
Not that I own the business, but I own the building that they are in.
Which one are you talking about?
Down in Catawba, right, right, go past the post office, and it sits right there at the railroad tracks.
Do you know which one?
Where's Alden?
She's somewhere nearby.
Do you know which one you're talking about?
Senate Number Three.
It's a public hearing, the only one that I would think of, is a public hearing, is a corporate zoning. And that's UDR.
The post says it's at 114, sitting in the yard where the, where the property is.
Yeah, Reservation Road?
That's, that's Clint.
Reservation Road?
Yes, sir, he's facing Reservation Road.
We got, we got a public hearing on that one, so you can, well, whatever works for you, but you're not restricted.
Yeah, I'll be glad to.
Before we get to it?
Yeah.
Just so he knows what it is.
Because, because people that rent the building have a private club in it. In other words, most of the people there is in the neighborhood. They can go over and sit down and don't have to listen to a bunch of junk.
Well, we're going to revisit that in a little bit. If you want to speak again, you can raise your hand, and I'll let you come back up to speak about it, okay?
All right, sir.
Thank you, sir. And let's see. So next order of business, consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second, I have a question on one of the items that's in the consent agenda.
Did you want to pull it out? Pardon? I said, we're going to debate it, you need to pull it out of consent agenda. Or did you just need a quick answer from staff?
Well, I'll get, I'll get the answer from staff afterwards.
Okay.
But it wasn't, it wasn't this one.
Who made the second?
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Okay, next item is public hearings. First item is consider second reading and public hearing of case number seventeen thirteen to rezon from AGC to RUD at eight fifty-four Willmont Road in the Clover Community. Anybody here want to speak against? Against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
What, what, no, no, you're good. Do you want to speak in favor?
I think y'all go by the party.
Yeah, he don't care long.
You must have been in politics before, wise man. Well, there you go. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Okay, bump, you want?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, need a new motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, consider second reading and public hearing, case number seventeen sixteen, two-two-eight Cameron Road in the York Community, rezoned from AGC to RUD one. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Remember to give your name and address, although we know who you are, but.
Good evening.
Hey, Tim?
Tim Helin, eighteen thirty Hands Mill Highway. I bought the property, there was a little over two-point-seven acres to the left of part of this property. I'd purchased it with hopes of getting it rezoned to put a house, or two houses in there. And then when I was there, the neighbor who's involved, Mr. Herring, I don't know if you have a sketch, but he had some land there. We were talking, told him what I was doing, asked if he'd want to sell some. He said yes. His wife had had some pretty serious cancer surgeries, and insurance didn't cover a lot of what they had. So I ended up telling him, you know what, I'll do the same deal if you want to sell another acre, but contingent on rezoning. If it gets rezoned, my plan is to build four homes there on four-point-seven acres, no high density. They're going to be in the two-to-two-four-hundred square foot range. They're going to be in that two-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar price range. There's other homes across the street and next to it, and I truly don't believe we're impacting the ag area out there negatively whatsoever. That's about it.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? We have a motion to close?
Move to close. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, I need a new motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, nope, sorry, Ms. Cox.
I just have one question. I noticed that there were three folks pointing from my district who, I believe those who are listed are the ones who rejected it.
Correct.
At Planning Commission stage.
Correct.
Do you know what the concerns were as they were voiced by the Planning Commission? I did not, I did not go back and look, and I didn't call Larry, so I'm just, I hate to put you on the spot, do you know?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't know what the, what those particular concerns were.
It looks like that it's, it's, the request is to, for something that's higher density than what, what the comp plan calls for. Well, I guess I'll say I'm going to approve second reading, but I need to follow up with my Planning Commission meter, figure out before third reading. I may not be able to support it then.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that's my question. The way this reads says it's non-consistent with the comprehensive land use plan for the area as the plan calls for a lower density than what is proposed. I read that to mean that this is higher density than what is proposed? Or am I, or should I be reading it that it's actually lower than what the plan calls for? Somebody clarify that sentence to me.
I think it slightly increases, because the next part of that sentence is, however, the limited increase in density of four acres won't substantially change.
But not of any significance.
So.
It may be in four acres.
Okay.
Imagine a comprehensive plan calls for a lower density than is currently zoned. You can put a higher density on the current zoning than the comprehensive plan allows, is what I think it's saying.
Any other comments? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, consider second reading, public hearing, case number seventeen eighteen, rezoned from our, I mean, I'm sorry, from UD to RUD at one fourteen Reservation Road. Anybody here want to speak against? Did, Andy?
Sir.
Did he, did you make him have?
Yeah, yes.
He didn't want to.
Clarified it.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, council to consider approving the York County Library Administrative Office Space Lease Termination and Authorizing York County Library Board Chair to Execute the Termination.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, consider third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-three of the York County Code of Ordinances, personnel by amending and clarifying the York County codified policy addressing part and full-time employees' pay termination and resignation over compensatory time, applicability of existing specified holidays, and an additional optional holiday, calculations, accumulations, and applications of annual leave, calculations and accumulations of sick leave, miscellaneous leave, Exhibit D to the policy setting forth current after-hours care providers, and Exhibit E to the policy providing the current list of safety-sensitive positions, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, consider second reading of an ordinance amending the York County Procurement Code so as to amend Section thirty-five-point-oh-oh-eight-B-one of Completing Purchase Transactions in its entirety to clarify small purchases, not requiring competitive quotes and defined for the York County Purchasing Card Program, to clarify throughout the procurement code of the purchasing threshold of thirty thousand dollars or more as requiring a competitive process, requiring York County Council approval, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, council to consider amending in second reading of an ordinance to levy and reimpose a one-percent sales and use tax subject to a, I lost my place, referendum within York County pursuant to the Council Project Sales Tax Act, South Carolina Code four-ten-thirty-three-hundred. It's, it's a Q as amended to define the specific purpose or purposes and designate the projects for which the proceeds of such tax may be used to provide the maximum time for which such tax may be imposed or reimposed for a period provided by law, to provide the approximate cost of the projects or facilities funded from the proceeds of such tax, and the approximate amount of net proceeds to be raised by such tax, to provide for a countywide referendum at the twenty-seventeen general election, to permit the existing one-percent sales and use tax to be reinstated and continue without interruption, to prescribe the contents of the ballot question in such a referendum, to provide conditions precedent to the imposition of such a tax and conditions or restrictions on the use and expenditure of such tax revenue, including utility relocation, to establish the priority in which the net proceeds of such tax if approved in a referendum are to be expended for the projects and purposes stated, and to provide for a formula or system on which multiple projects may be funded simultaneously, to authorize the York County Board of Registration Elections to conduct a referendum, to provide for the administration of such tax if approved, to provide for the payment of such tax, to provide for the administration of the program, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I guess I would just like to say, I agree with Mr. Anderco on one thing. If it's not right, then we don't do it, just to continue it. But I happen to think that it's right. The process that we've gone through over the years, everybody's not a hundred percent happy, but we, we have made a lot of improvements this time around that weren't there before, including budgeting for utilities relocation, as well as having some maintenance paving in there. And I think the process has continued to improve, and I think it, it does this time, but, but I couldn't agree more. If it's not done right, I don't think we should fund it. I just believe that it's done right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
One of the things that Paul mentioned was a five-million-dollar shortfall for utility relocation. I think that would be true in a Pennies Three and a Pennies Two. I don't think that'll be true in Pennies Four, because that's what.
be true in Pennies Four, because that's what we've got out ahead and done, we've done a much better job than we've ever done on utility relocation, so I'm not as concerned about that five million. Question also came out about our finance, so I'd like to be able to ask Kevin, are we, what is your estimate for, or what is the administration's estimate for the revenue for Pennies?
Mr. Shanahan, did you want to speak?
No, he can answer that, I have something else.
Okay, Kevin.
Paul's right, the target that I forecasted was two sixty-five, there, it's an estimate, you know, it could come in lower, it could come in higher, the amount that the commission picked is within that range, I would consider less likely than two sixty-five. Less likely than two sixty-five, but I think it's still an attainable number. You know, in the two thousands, we saw the recession hit, and we had negative growth in sales tax. There are variables out there that could happen that we can't predict at this point in time. I did a conservative estimate, the sales tax revenue had been up to eleven percent in the last couple of years, I didn't use those high percentages going forward, so I did a conservative estimate, however, you know, if I had to pick a number, the number I picked was two sixty-five. Their number is within what I consider a reasonable deviation of that.
And my understanding is that the final project listed on this is may, being very clear that that may not happen based on the fluctuation of those funds, that, you know, every, we're going to accomplish every project, but that last project may not happen because of that exact fluctuation you're discussing, and that's something that's going to be, that is being told to the public.
Yes.
That's going to be an asterisk.
That's, that's in there, yes, sir.
Which project?
And there's.
Last one.
The last one?
Yeah. And one other thing, when we're talking about your utility movement, we will pay the hundred percent for the movement as it is, if you have three posts and you want to move them, and you have to move them, then we'll pay that. If you suddenly decide, we want to improve this and put them all underground, you pay the difference, that upset by ten million, that's your ten million if you want to do improvements, we are one-for-one movements.
And I'll just finish my comments, I, I get the concerns, and I think you're right, I think people in York County do want roads repaved, and I talk to people in my district all the time, and they want repaving, I got six point four million dollars in requests last year for repaving roads in District One alone, certainly I didn't have six point four million dollars to do that. Fifty million is going to go a long way to do that, but what people, I hear more than anything from people in my area, is they want, they want roads expanded, they want twenty-one five-lane, they want the southern bypass five-lane, they, they, they want greater connectivity, which the extension of the Huggram Parkway will do allowing you to get to Zor Road. Would I have ranked these roads in this order? No, but that's not my task on the county council, my job's not to rank it, and I imagine if the seven of us tried to rank the roads, it would not, it would not look like what it looks like now, because we would all put roads in our district first, that's just, that's, that's what we're here to do. I, I support Pennies, I think this is, and I support Pennies not based on what we did in Pennies One and Pennies Two. I support Pennies based on what I have seen out of staff over the past two years, and the difference, and the different attitude they brought, and the way to, to save money, and to make sure we don't get where we were before. So perhaps I'm voting on this based on a, on a belief that we have, that we have turned the corner, but that's why I support, we'll, we'll support the Pennies Four.
Ms. Love.
Well, this is my first experience with Pennies up close and personal, but I've certainly driven the roads, and fortunate that we have Jerry Helms who actually lives in my district as the chair of the Pennies Commission, so, you know, when I, when I look at what, what they looked at, the roads that they looked at, and what they came up with in the end for my district, which I have to multiply by all seven districts, but when I, when I look at what was done for District Two, I'm very happy with, with that, and I agree, Paul, that resurfacing is, to me, is the most economical thing to do, it's very important, but, you know, for District Two, we're getting a lot of that, and I made a presentation, and I asked for a lot of that, so I agree with that, but if I look at what they, what they're doing for, for, for my individual district, it's, it's right on, so I have to assume, without studying all the other roads, that it's just as accurate for, for those other districts.
Mr. Winkler. And I'll just come back toward me.
I too understand and agree with what Mr. Anico was saying, and I appreciate the work that the Citizens Committee did in reviewing the previous Pennies programs. I do also appreciate the work that the Pennies Four Commission did in doing this, and I didn't attend the Rock Hill side, so I don't know who did those on that side, but I attended in York, Sharon, the other communities, and there were citizens there giving input on those roads, and I saw the, talked to my appointee about what they were doing, heard from that commission as far as how they were ranking the roads, what their, their criteria were and that type thing, and I know they got out and rode a lot of the roads, and did field trips. Again, you know, we could all say we, we would rank them differently, or add different roads, or maybe take this road off and put that one on, but that's not the council's place, that's the commission's place to listen to the citizens and do that, and, yeah, I would love to have had every road in my district on there, but that's not reasonable, there are some very, very poor roads in my district that are on that list, though, and overall, I think it's a, a good list, and I would do support it, and I will vote for it this evening.
Mr. Roddy.
I'll just say, I think the process that the commission went through by going around to the different areas trying to get citizens' input, and we all know these meetings don't always be heavily attended, you know, for one reason or another, you know, people do have their lifestyle, and they make the choice whether they come to the meeting or not, but certainly, I think the process in which we select these roads have evolved, going back to Pennies One, I think we've, we've grown and eliminated a lot of mistakes we've made over the past that, that really made Pennies a, a rough go here for a time, I think we've worked through that, and anytime you're starting up a new project, new initiative that's never been done before, that, that's kind of to be expected with Pennies One, and you kind of work through some, some more difficulties with Pennies Two, but Pennies Three, I think we've kind of turned the corner a little bit, I think we, we know exactly what we need to do, face utility relocation, obviously, ranking the roads and which ones hit the top of the list first, and which one at the bottom, I've always said, District Four's primary project has always been at the bottom, and it is back there again, but we do have a stormwater project, and the, the one thing that really, I really like about this one, we've added that maintenance component, we've never had that before, and I think that's really going to let the, the everyday driver rider that, that's kind of hit the bumps in the roads that we haven't been able to get to with the previous Pennies by going in and doing some maintenance, I think they'll really appreciate that part. Obviously, we act for, we would have liked to have seen seventy-five meeting and put more towards the resurfacing, but, you know, we compromise on that, we compromise on the roads that have been selected, you know, if I had my druthers, I'd put District Four Road right at the top, but, you know, I'm, I like to think I'm a team player, and hopefully we can make the numbers work and we can get to these projects. We don't, we're definitely not going to go down the same road with Pennies One, where that project got finished fourteen years later, you know, I think we've, we've passed that point, I think we, we have a better, better vision, better eyes and ears on, on what we're doing, so I, I look forward to, you know, cranking them out and getting the votes, but if, if the general public doesn't like what, what's been put together, and I'll say this for the record also, council had nothing to do with selecting these roads, this was all on a, a commission that, that went out and polled the people and did all the legwork, so if people don't like the roads, or don't like the selection, we didn't, we didn't put it together, and obviously, well, actually, we had no contact with the commission, or in influence with the commission, so I think that was a, that was a shock when we found out we weren't, or we couldn't influence them on road selections, we could, you know, communicate through, through staff, but go into meetings and suggesting one way or another, we couldn't have that interference, but I, I respect the people who gave their time, effort to, to do what they did, because the seven of us couldn't have committed the time to go around countywide to try to put this thing together, so I, I appreciate that part, that they have given their time and effort to, to put this together for us.
Ms. Cox.
I want to thank Paul for the efforts that he has taken, along with the other folks that were on the Citizen Ad-Hoc Committee, it truly was a lot of time and effort that you've put into it, and you know more about it than probably most of the folks sitting up here, so I do want to let you know that I appreciate that. Would I have preferred to have seen seventy-five to eighty in repaving? Yes, I think that would have gone, been a lot more paving done in our county with less right-of-way and utility costs. Would I have liked to seen all Pennies Two and Pennies Three projects completed on Pennies Four? Yes, I would have. The problem that I see is that we need to hear from the public now, the next step is to go to the public, and, and let's hear what they have to say. Without your efforts, though, I don't think we would have had some of the victories that we do have. Fifty million in repaving, is it exactly what you guys wanted and what I had asked for? No, but it was a lot better, and like Bump said, it wouldn't have been there if you guys wouldn't have fought for that. Everything on Pennies Three is now going to be completed, so everybody that voted on Pennies Three, all of those projects are going to get finished, that's critical, that's important, because we made promises, and when I say we, the council who approved Pennies Three, said we're going to push this through, and we're going to make sure that those get done, those are the projects that were required to be completed on Pennies Four, and now the estimates work so that we're going to make sure that those get finished. The utility and right-of-way costs have tremendously reined those in because of the efforts that the committee made, so I think that there are victories that have been made from the Citizen Ad-Hoc Committee, and I want to thank you for that. Is it everything that we wanted? No, but I think that it does improve our roads, I think that it's worth putting to the public and having public carry on, so I'll, I'll be approving second reading.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
I just want to clarify something for myself. First of all, I did speak to the Western York County representative when he went, when I asked him about serving on that, I did not put any input into roads because they weren't allowed, and I did attend meetings, but I sat in the audience and listened, I did not speak or anything as a council member, I just went to see what was being, what was being said in my districts and for the roads and my citizens.
And I'm going to wrap it up, just like Ms. Cox did, I want to, well, I also want to thank the Pennies Four Committee, Jerry chaired, but Paul, for all his hard work, he's always getting involved, and for any citizen to get involved, that makes a difference. This was a little bit of a harder one for me than I thought it would be. Like I said, at the first reading, the one thing that I feel like I haven't achieved on my six and a half years on council is control of road cost, and I think the, we have a lot of room for improvement, we have improved, though, compared to, I was just looking at different costs from two to three, tremendous improvement, but I think we have ways to go on that, I personally feel like we may need to bring a management company in to really get that on-time and under-budget attitude built in there. I was a little concerned about the road maintenance, I was saying twenty-five percent, I think it ended up being eighteen percent. A big priority for me was four-laning twenty-one up to Carolins, and that got it, I think, number nineteen on the list, if I remember right, out of twenty. Plus, y'all know how I feel about Dave Laub Boulevard extension, that was not even my whisper in there, so there are a lot of things that I didn't personally agree with, but as a package, the importance of Pennies Four, I think it's important to let the people decide, because in the end, it's their decision, and, and I feel like that's the direction I need to go, to allow the citizens to make that decision, plus, you know, we work as a team up here, and I think it needs to be unanimous, and we all work together, so because of that reason, I'm going to support it. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, new business, consider of approval of a moratorium of understanding between York County and Carolina Water Service.
Memorandum.
Memorandum, what did I say?
Moratorium.
Moratorium.
A little bit of a difference.
That was just.
Motion to approve that.
That was just a Freudian slip, sorry, that was, that was not good. Memorandum of understanding between York County and Carolina Water Service to extend franchise agreement for six months.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-four forty-one regarding phase-two expansion and renovations of York County's Moss Justice Center to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Lightner Construction Company of York County, for a total cost of twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
You know, we, we always talk about, you know, companies coming in from outside and creating jobs, and I think with this local company getting this particular contract, I think it, it speaks volumes, it keeps our local, local contractors, our local subs working, and, and a contract of this size, I'm, I'm sure Lightner would probably be looking to pick up a few extra hands on the, on the, on the, on the job site, so if anyone's out there looking for a job, may want to see how they can get an application through Lightner Construction, because this is a pretty sizable contract, and it just, another opportunity for someone here locally to get on the payroll.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
I'd just like to point out that I believe, if I'm not incorrect, Lightner did our courthouse for us, and did a wonderful job on that, so they, and they're a local company, so I would like to see that.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-four thirty-eight regarding structural additions and renovations to York County's existing public works facility to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Hogan Construction Company, LLC of Easy Lee, South Carolina, for a total cost of ten million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number two-four-four-two regarding the outfit of York County's Passport Services Facility to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Hartland Contracting of Indian Trail, North Carolina, for a total base bid amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. And this is a big profit center for York County, and it's a highly demanded service, because I believe Macklinburg County still refers them down here, if I'm not mistaken. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Committee reports, the Honorable Chairwoman, Allison Love, will talk about zoning committee meeting, June twelfth.
So last Monday, June twelfth, Councilwoman Roddy and Councilwoman Cox and I met, we had that meeting prior to the Planning Commission's meeting, to, so that we could be updated on a development called Westport on Highway two-seventy-four, we received information and updates from Steve Allen, and following our meeting, Councilwoman Cox, County Manager, Bill Shanahan and I attended the Planning Commission meeting, just for a little more information, and to just kind of get an idea of what was going on within our Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you, ma'am. Next committee report is finance and operations, the Honorable Michael Johnson.
Finance operations met today at five o'clock. We heard from the local municipalities regarding the recreation budget allocation. They were unanimous, they've met amongst themselves, they've come up with a, their own formula, we agreed, it's their formula, the, the amount of money doesn't change, it's just how they're going to move it around changes, looks like Rock Hill, TUK, and Fort Mill will take slightly less, and York and Smyrna and some of the smaller areas will get slightly more, it's not, it's, it's not a huge change, but it is a change, and they were all, they were unanimous in doing it, and so we passed that, and you will see, when you get the minutes, you will see letters from every mayor of every municipality supporting that, we asked that be attached to the minutes. We then took applications and passed out the following people, Caitlin Velazquez for Catawba Mental Health Board, Hannah Davis for Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, District One, Brian Musgrave, Keep York County Beautiful, District One, Genevieve Politez, is that right?
Close.
Close, close enough, for District Three. We deferred action on one opening for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, and then approved Rosalyn Harps for a vacant at-large position, and then on the Economic Development Board, we confirmed David Oxendine for a second term on his reappointment. Lastly, Watts Huckabee, Chairman of the Hospitality Tax Committee, came before our group and, and provided us the marketing grant application recommendations, I am, this is, this is what they are, this is not a very good copy, we could barely read what is on this, so they're going to get this around everybody, we didn't vote it up or We didn't vote it up or down, it was simply, it's, they, they, they tell us what they think, and then it comes before the full council, so that is what will happen at our next scheduled meeting, and that was our.
Next scheduled meeting of council, or your?
Next scheduled meeting of council, yeah, that's gonna be before the full council.
Will not give a recommendation.
No, because it's ten separate ones, and I, I don't know if we all support each and every one of the ten recommendations, but, you know, and that might be easier done, it certainly would be easier to do that at a full level than, than us trying to do it.
Okay. Next item, council member, new non-agenda comments, any council member have any? There being none.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Love.
So just wanted to say that the next zoning committee meeting will be on June the twenty-seventh, that will be at Heckel at five-thirty.
I have an issue with that one. I sent your text earlier, I got a conflict to come up, but we'll get it in before the next, before the next council meeting, because we're not meeting till the third Monday, right? Next month?
It's gonna need to be pretty soon, it's gonna need to be pretty soon, so as soon as you can meet, just let, let me know, and we'll get it scheduled. And, and the purpose of that meeting will be to discuss the tools that we can use for growth management, and one of those will be the increasing minimum lot size, so I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, and if anybody else has any ideas as far as what tools they think would be effective, as effective as that, then please let us, just let one of us know ahead of time, and we're gonna move on towards some growth management.
I don't think I saw any other hand motions, so that being said, do we have a motion for exec, wait a minute, this is, I forgot, citizens' concerns, anybody here, no concerns? Okey-dokey. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir, I move we go into executive session to discuss contractual matter potentially involving custodial services.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no, back at seven-thirty. Okay, we've ended executive session, there's no action items, do we have any further discussions? There being none, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.